All right, it's seven o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started here. Call the meeting to order. First item of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Knabel, here. Ms. Dobson. Mr. Earhart. Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Aravalo. Ms. Dominic.
Here.
Mr. Sly.
Here.
Ms. Squire. Mr. Morse.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Very good, thank you very much. Any changes to the agenda?
No.
You're taking a motion? To approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries eight zero. Citizen participation. I don't think we have anybody signed up back there. So move on formal commission actions approval of minutes from November seventh, twenty twenty four meeting.
We accept the minutes as presented.
Been moved and seconded, start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Aye. Epstein.
Aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero one. All right, first item, second item up on the agenda is public hearing CUP twenty four dash one off premise billboard. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so we'll start the public hearing here. Have any commission members describe any ex party communications that they might have had regarding this case? All right. Commission members describe what if any conflicts of interest they may have and need to dismiss themselves from the hearing. Okay. Staff versions report and comments regarding the case.
Good evening. Tonight we have a conditional use application CUP twenty four dash one for a billboard located at two zero five zero zero west one hundred and eighty fifth terrace. It is an M one zone district on the area is about seven acres. And the surrounding area zoning is all industrial with some residential across the highway. The applicant add trend has applied for a conditional use permit for one off premise billboard sign. The proposed sign is to be located on the north end of the property at two zero five zero zero west one hundred and eighty fifth terrace. Terrace, it's east of one sixty nine highway. The off premises billboard sign is in allowed use providing they are within either an M one or an MP zone. The signs, the sign proposed location lays within M one district. The size of the sign is stated, is stated to be ten foot by thirty foot two faced V shape. The height to the top of the sign would be thirty foot above the right away grade from which it would be viewed. The height above the ground grade at the base of the sign is expected to be thirty foot. The sign's location and size does conform to our regulation of section seventeen seven thirty, as well as section seventeen three five four of the conditional use. Staff would review the sign annually and report any findings to the planning commission. This action would comply with the matrix policy put into place by the planning commission in two thousand and fourteen, which is attached to your staff report. All required notifications to the surrounding property owners were completed with no comments received. In addition, we did public, publish the public hearing notice per state statute. And going through some of the golden factors, the neighborhood characters all in one surrounding where the sign would be located. The adjacent parcels. There are some residential areas that are divided by the highway and the railroad. The proposed CUP would not have any detrimental effect on nearby properties. It has been zoned in one since two thousand and sixteen. Public gain includes regulating the sign with a conditional use permit. And it does conform to the Spring Hill comp plan. Staff recommended conditions of the CUP annual review by city staff and report it to the planning commission. That the sign be kept in good repair, lighting to be shielded to prevent glare to adjoining properties and US one sixty nine highway. The applicant add trend contact city staff in the event of sale of the sign of the structure, the sign structure. The CUP shall become null and void if the sign is vacated or removed for a period of six months or more. And the advertisement shall not be for a business located on the premises. You have your, you can either recommend approval, deny, or table it. And then it's got a suggested motion there for you. And I'll try to answer any questions.
Why can the advertisement not be for a business located on the premise?
Per our regulations, that's not what a, an off premise sign does. It's meant to direct you to, to a business that is not where that sign is located.
So there's a bunch of very specific code provisions on what an on premises sign can be. And the big thing is the size, so they're much smaller, I think like the quick trip one.
Yeah.
And the billboard is much bigger, so there's just a difference between the two, so it's kind of a, you gotta pick which one you want to do when you're eligible for both.
Wasn't that the original intention though was to advertise?
It was, but they, the way it was applied for, it was an on premise sign, which they would have been able to do. It just didn't meet the size requirement, so we had recommended they reduce the size and they did not want to, so they came back going through the public hearing and conditional use process for an off premise billboard sign.
Condition five includes natural disaster too, right? If it's down for six months with a natural?
Uh, I believe so.
Condition number five? Yep. The sign is thirty feet off the ground.
At grade level.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a vacation. So what happens if it's destroyed?
So that would, if it's destroyed, then, I mean, there is not a sign there. I mean, they can put it back up, so.
Length of time, I thought there was something that, that they had such a length of time to repair and replace.
You can put another condition in here if you'd like, but condition five as written is just vacation or removing, so they take it down on their own if they choose to. If it's an enacted, God wouldn't be those, yeah.
Also include?
Would you like it to?
I just.
Would that, and would all of you like it to? I mean, yeah, you're welcome to propose that to be added to condition five.
But isn't there something already about weather?
I, I think that Amy mentioned it, that if it's, if it's down for six months, then it, then it vacates the CUP. If it's down for six months, it vacates the CUP and they have to reapply.
But don't we already have something about weather? Natural weather happening?
The only thing that I can think of that is if, when we were talking about Webster Street and if a building was vacant for six, was more than six months, then that was the same type of situation. That's the only thing I can remember about something like that.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever remember anything about natural disasters.
Yeah, I, I don't think it had anything to do with natural disasters, I think it's just, if it was vacant for six months or if it was destroyed, they had six months to rebuild it. And I think the same thing with the sign.
Okay, I just was.
You mentioned that, Amy, I, I think.
I did.
Amy, how good is, how long is the CUP good for? I can't remember, it was five years or is it now twenty? And then they have, because you're doing an annual.
They, it's an annual review, so they'll, it'll.
That takes care of it.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember because the, the regulations were that they had to renew it every five and we got rid of that, I think.
We did, some of the, yeah, we did, because, yep, some, a lot of the schools were that way.
Forgot.
Yep.
If I remember it, it was annual review by staff, so they didn't have to come back to us every year, because otherwise it was every five years and they had to come back for us.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was every five.
And I can't believe it's been ten years since I was already.
Yeah.
But that's another story.
So why does this sign require a CUP?
Um, it's just per our code. That way we can make sure that it's, that it's taken care of and well maintained.
Mainly because it's an off premise.
So, yeah, all.
Yeah, our zoning.
Billboards require.
Mm-hmm.
A CUP.
It's, it's in this table.
Yeah, I saw it in there, yeah.
It's because everything listed in that table has to have a CUP. That's one of the things listed.
Right. And, and then the last time this came before us, was it, was it an off premise billboard at that time?
It was an on premise is how it was submitted.
But you're saying now that that's not permitted?
It, it is permitted.
It is.
On premise.
So what came before you last time was an on premise billboard that was the size of an off premises billboard.
Right.
So it was kind of a, you gotta pick, either the smaller size to advertise an on premises site or a larger size that can advertise for anything.
But is the intent still to advertise it for the onsite business?
They can't if for an off premise, per the code.
Okay. So this will just be a regular billboard then?
Correct.
Got it. It, it's, it's interesting in the attachment related to the conditional use permit, how it says that, that the CUP allows a city or county to consider special uses, which may be essential or desirable, but are not allowed as a matter of right within a zoning district through a public hearing process. A conditional use permit can provide flexibility within the zoning ordinance. Another traditional purpose of the CUP is to enable a municipality to control certain uses, which could have detrimental effects on the community. And, and I think that's interesting because I, that's, to me, that's why a billboard is, is requiring a CUP because, I mean, it's.
Big.
They're, they're, yeah, and they're, they're generally, they're, they're unsightly and they're blight. And in this case, that would be the first thing that you see, you know, coming down into Spring Hill.
Actually, it'd be the second or third sign you'd see.
Oh, it's not the first?
Yeah.
Okay, is this one in the middle or is it the south end?
It's in the middle.
It's in the middle, okay, so it'd be the second one. But it would, it would add to the clutter for sure. And I, I think an argument certainly could be made that, I mean, because I, I looked at the site and, you know, Dayton Creek is directly opposite the highway, the, the expansion area for Dayton Creek, it's not platted yet. And you could argue that it's, you know, incompatible with the residential area across the street. You could also argue that the current use is an industrial area. You know, it's fine, I know we're not rezoning it, but, you know, it, the only, th- there's no detrimental effect of denying this application. And, you know, and, and the fact that it requires a CUP to me implies that, you know, that there's a concern, you know, by requiring a CUP that it can have a detrimental effect as a billboard. And I know last time too, we talked about not wanting anymore, but feeling like, oh, the ordinance still allows one more. But, you know, recently when Lenexa denied the homeless shelter, you know, it was compatible with the zoning and everything, but they denied the permit because they used the golden factors as being incompatible with the community. In this case, there's already two billboards. You know, so is the third really, really necessary? And I think it's, I think the other two are probably owned by the same ad trend. Don't know that for sure, but I, I don't see it as being, you know, harmful to them by denying this.
So is it still within this allotted footage? Can I?
Uh, we're, we're in a public hearing, we'll have, I'll give you an opportunity to speak.
Is it still within the allotted footage to have that third one there?
Yeah, it's about twelve, it's about twelve hundred feet from the one to the south. And it's only required to be a thousand.
Thousand, yeah.
Is there somebody that monitors content?
Um, we don't.
What do you, what do you mean by content?
You mean what's on the sign?
Yeah, I mean, could there be a sign for, or you're saying, could it be for, I don't know, the end zone or something that's down the street or whatever the names of those places are called? I mean, so it could be, I mean, which across from Dayton Creek then would be any more of a concern, but.
No, the city cannot by the first amendment regulate what's on that sign. So if this billboard can, yeah, that would be, we have to be content neutral on that.
You know, Chuck, I hear what you're saying, I also think that the location of it, even though it is between two other signs, that with what it butts up to, and one right there, I, I think that it has the potential though to draw the eye of people on the highway to bring them into our community. If, depending on what it is that we're advertising.
If it's something in our community though.
Yeah.
It could very well be something for Aletha or, not saying that it would be, but.
Yeah.
And, and it does meet the code, I mean, that's the whole reason they came back to us with the off premise billboard sign because it was too big the first time on premise. And so it's following all the, the laws here, it'd be, you can make an argument like what Chuck said, but it's tough to win, honestly, to win that, that it doesn't stick, because it is in an M one and it is by other billboard signs. And I don't think that would be a good, I don't think we could turn it down just because it, say it's right across from Dayton Creek, I don't know, I mean, that's a, that's a tough one, but it's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you, you could, you could argue that, you know, those homes across the highway are, will be negatively impacted by it. You know, and the relative gain to the public health, safety and welfare as compared to the loss of value or hardship imposed upon the applicant. There's no hardship if it's denied, in, in my opinion.
So we're kind of getting into deliberations, so I need to go through the rest of the public before we get to that point.
Gotcha.
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off because we'll, we'll have an opportunity to debate what, what we think about it, but I wanted to give the applicant, so the next thing we'll do will be give the applicant a brief present, an opportunity, opportunity to give a brief presentation.
Still during the public hearing?
Thank you for coming.
We are not the owners of the sign. Mr. Cummins is the owner of the sign and he is member of this community. And I think he is a, is a good investor in this community.
Does, does he own the other signs too? That are there?
We own the other signs. He contacted us, and I think we went through this last time, contacted us because we're neighbors on highway seventy one to build this structure for him. So, um, let's put that to bed and just kind of move, move forward for Mr. Cummins. We applied for the permit. It is his structure, he will, he will own the structure and he will deem who will advertise on it. We won't have any control over that.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, can I, can I ask a dumb question about advertising? I, is it? I mean, as a billboard owner, are you, are you bound by some like federal requirements where you can't deny who advertises on your billboard? Or, or do you have to accept anything?
No.
Or can you deny it and say, you know what, that's in poor taste?
It's, it's.
We're not gonna allow it.
It's at our discretion.
Okay.
Um, there are laws and rules that apply. If you're so many feet within a, a, a church or a school, you can't advertise alcohol. you can't advertise alcohol or, um, adult things. Um, different things like that, but it's at our discretion. Um, where I came from before, uh, we, we didn't allow a lot of political signs, just because we didn't believe in, um, well, first of all, we, we always have to run everything by the landowner first. If, if, if it was our sign. Mr. Cummins is, um, obviously a part of this community. I don't think he's gonna do anything to offend anybody. Um, he's gonna support this community versus somebody down in O- O- Olathe or Lenexa or anything like that. So I think he's, um, probably very aware of, of everybody's opinion here and wants to support this community.
And, and I think it's a lot further than, what is it, a thousand feet within a church or school, so I think it's a lot. I think that's kind of the feat, but I think.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what it is in Kansas. I, I'm not the one that applies for the permits and, and I've only been here for about a year, so. Um, I am responsible for selling the signs, advertising. But of course, you always want to support a, a local community before you go outside that community.
I think what Debbie was saying was that we have some local businesses that we wouldn't want to promote.
Correct. I think about driving, you know, through Missouri and there's like all these signs and it's like, oh dear lord. Um, I just wouldn't want those across from.
Oh.
Wouldn't even want them, I mean, to be honest, I just don't think they'd want them, so.
Yeah, no, understood.
And the city is not dictating what these folks will put on their signs.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, but it sounds like that the sign owner has some discretion of what they can allow on their sign.
If, if they would like to do that, yes.
Mm-hmm. That answers my question. I, I just, I was curious if you guys have any discretion or if you're obligated in some way, you know, to accept the ad because they're paying for it, you know, or something. But it sounds like you guys have discretion and you could say, you know what, that's not consistent with the type of ads we want.
That's on our billboards.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Cummins would have the same.
Right.
Discretion, absolutely.
Any more questions?
I, I do, can I ask?
Sure.
Um, I used to work for, um, a local nonprofit and we considered at one point doing, uh, having signs on billboards. And there was some discussion that that really wasn't very fruitful. Do you find that it is? I mean, is it, is something that is really of value to businesses?
Oh, absolutely, and there's statistics that will, that, that will prove it and I can, um, support you or, you know, supply you with all, all the documentation for that. I was just reading, um, some stuff today and, and there was a, um, a group of college students that, um, did an extensive research on outdoor advertising and, and the benefits from it. Um, normally, when you invest in, in, um, outdoor advertising, you have either in between like a five to one, uh, ROI, up to about a ten to one ROI. But that's, I don't think that's for discussion for here, but I can certainly give you that information later.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Only one public here, so. All right, moving on. Um, any commission members have any more questions for the applicant or staff? All right, then I'll close the public hearing. And now's the time to deliver. Take this back. I, I think I already kind of voiced my opposition. So, you know, one of the, one of the reasons that I wanted to serve in the planning commission is to, you know, do what I can to try to make a positive impact for the long term. And I think, you know, th- there's a reason that communities have lots of sign ordinances. I'm speaking generally here. I'm not talking about Spring Hills. But they have sign ordinances. There's a reason that tall signs become shorter and shorter over history in the last fifty years, and now most communities just want ground level signs. It's because signage is, it, it's, uh, it's unpleasing, you know, to the eye and it obstructs your view of the horizon and, and it's, you know, at night, there's, there's light pollution. And it's, it's kind of blight, you know, if you see billboard upon billboard. Again, not saying that's the situation here. There'll be three total separated by a thousand to twelve hundred feet. But, but it's just, it's not a desirable attribute, um, to the community. And I think if we apply the golden criteria, which is, you know, includes the, um, character of the neighborhood, you know, I think there's an argument to be made that if, if you're a Dayton Creek resident, you don't want to see a, a, a billboard directly across the street from you or in, in that new, um, area on the north side of Dayton Creek, once it's developed. That's not what you want to see, you know, necessarily when you look out. And the product or the property is perfectly suited for the uses that it's currently zoned. I don't, I don't think we're obligated to approve a conditional use permit on something that's potentially detrimental to the community. Um, you know, the, I don't think there's, you know, arguably a relative gain to the public health, safety or welfare. And I don't think there's also a big loss, um, or hardship on the applicant if, if we were to deny it. And, and I also think, you know, there's no one here tonight to oppose it, but I think if, you know, if you took a survey, hey, does everybody want this billboard here? I think, you know, the, the public, the majority of the public would say, no, no, we don't want billboards. And, you know, well, why is that? It's because they're, they're not attractive. And, you know, they, they benefit, they're not serving a, a, a public service. You know, they, they're, they're benefiting the owner who's selling advertising, so. Um, for those reasons, I'll vote against it. I, I also, I used the example earlier during the public hearing portion that, you know, about Lenexa where, um, you know, the city there was, there were a lot of arguments for that homeless shelter that, oh, it complies, it complies, it meets all of the code, it, it's, uh, it's compatible with the zoning. Oh, you know, the board of direct, the board of county commissioners has already invested, all those things. Their planning commission and their city council unanimously voted it down using the golden factors, so, you know, and, and that was a permit. I think it was a special use permit versus a conditional use permit, but the idea, the idea is the same. It's a use which is potentially detrimental to the community. So they voted it down and, and, uh, that, that, that's how I'll vote, but I understand if everyone else wants to support it. Any other deliberation?
I guess I'm curious if you guys remember, um, if the two billboards that were built there that are currently standing, whether or not they were built. Remember correctly, they were built before Dayton Creek was built, is that right?
Say again, louder cap.
Were the signs already standing when Dayton Creek was?
Do they predate Dayton Creek?
I know one of them did. I'm not sure if the other one did or not.
I think they both did.
I think they both did, yeah.
I do too. I guess I'm just asking because if those homes were built and there's already two signs that they're looking out, they're looking out towards the highway, looking across the highway into an M1 area that's already pretty much developed, and so that's what they're looking into. I don't think that it hurt their development by having those two other signs there. Otherwise, I don't think that they would have sold as many homes and built as many homes there. That's just kind of my thoughts, just because.
And, and also the people.
Highway.
It, it, that's kind of my argument with multifamily too, which is that the multifamily's there first and then single family comes later. Well, you knew, you knew what was there, you know, before.
Yeah.
And, and to me, like with multifamily, it's different, or a billboard wants, you know, well, the homes are there now and now the sign's coming later. Or a single family's there and then multifamily comes later. It's a different level of impact.
I just, I think, I guess, I feel that the area is consistent.
Yeah, as a highway.
Yeah.
With the other two signs there too, I think.
With the way.
Uh, you're saying with the other two signs anyway.
And with the industrial right behind it.
There's nothing on the other signs. The one, I think there's something on the first one, then the second one says add here. Because I don't think there's ever been any ones, but anyway.
Yeah, and they're all the same size, right?
Yeah.
One of them had the in heaven is in Spring Hill.
Yeah.
At for a while, remember that?
Yeah.
So you guys are saying the existing signs are the buns and this one's the meat in the middle? It's not complete without it.
Makes me uncomfortable.
Because there's the one where it's got, um, the realer, what's it?
Janelle.
Janelle.
Oh.
I think that's the first one and the second one's the empty one.
If we're going north, yeah.
I, I, I really don't have a problem with it. Like you said, there's two signs there already. Uh, you're clear across the street from the subdivision, so. So those other signs, as you mentioned, were there before. People have bought, haven't stopped buying, so it hasn't affected it. And my understanding is the sign is to advertise his business. It's not to sell it to the general public.
I think we were told tonight, it actually is gonna be a, he's shifted away from that, yeah.
It's a revenue builder for his business, you know.
He also owns a lot of businesses surrounding that, that he could advertise on different parcels.
Right. Just not for that particular business.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Other business.
Which is the storage or the flooring and the storage, I guess.
Yeah, whatever, I, yeah.
Probably not the flooring, but the other ones.
Yeah, so he, he does own quite a bit, so I would assume he probably.
So if you look from Google Maps, you can see that there's no houses built across from it.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it's current, the Google Maps is September twenty twenty-four.
Yep, no, and that's what I said, that, that's owned by the developer who owns Dayton Creek, and so it'll be developed in the future.
Yeah, with the sign, if we put the sign there, it would be already there, so. Anybody else have any discussion? Personally, I, I don't have an issue with the sign. I mean, we've got two signs there now. They're well spaced. There's, they would be there before any residential goes in across this road. It's, so I, I don't have an issue with the, with the sign personally.
Because it's the last one we can have, right?
Correct.
That was my question.
Yeah.
It is, we talked about that last time, so.
Because I think it's five, right, or four?
Three.
Three.
Due to the spacing, the, along there, the, those were the only three that they could be, that was, there was only room for one more.
No, I mean, like, through the whole city, there can only be a total of.
I'd have to look.
Now, I, so.
It was based on.
This is also subject to change as we grow and annex more land along highways, so. There's not a code for it, it says only five in the whole city. It's just the way the spacing works.
Yeah.
With our current highway frontage.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if we were to annex a bunch of land, south, north, whatever, we could put more there.
Last one, you know, allowable in that area.
Right, that, correct.
Yes. Any other deliberation? I'd entertain a motion.
I move, I move to recommend approval of application CUP twenty-four dash one conditional use permit.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve CUP twenty-four dash one. Any other discussion, but we'll start the vote. All right, start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, one, zero. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, public hearing zoning change for the micro distillery fencing and screening. So since this is another public hearing, we'll open the public hearing. And any members have any ex-party communication?
I need to review myself.
Okay. And any conflict, is it a conflict of interest? Okay.
Sorry.
You were ahead of me. I was, right there you is. That's, that's okay, we understand. Um, so any other, any else with co- ex-party communications or conflicts of interest, we'll just go on both together. All right, moving on, staff report then.
Uh, we're gonna keep this as a pretty quick staff report, uh, and I'll try to keep it shorter than if I just got up there, walked up. Um, we are changing a few things in city code. One of them is making it more clear about where micro distilleries, micro breweries can go. So as you can see, there's a couple places that, uh, we're gonna allow a micro distillery with and without consumption on premises. And there's another cleanup there in the definitions of section ninety-one, um, just making it clear that beverage manufacturing and bottling, um, is different than alcoholic beverage manufacturing and bottling. So we want all the alcoholic manufacturer and beverage bottling to fall within that micro distillery or micro brewery, which are separately provided for. So that just cleans up kind of a loophole. Other than that, um, now micro distillers will be both conditional uses, um, within C2 and M1. Um, so kind of provides for them, M1 is, you know, pretty industrial. I don't know how many people are gonna open up a place for consumption on premises, but we want to give them the opportunity to allow consumption at their micro distillery. Uh, C2 kind of fits with that business use where you would expect to see one, um, same place you'd maybe want to see a micro brewery or any other type of bar, so. Um, and then the last item is the fence code, which, uh, we took up at city council not too long ago, and then Amy pointed out that, uh, we hadn't brought it before you all, so that's just to check that box. Um, some modification of the fence code to allow some front yard fencing for model homes, um. Yeah, nothing too big. I don't think it's gonna be an issue anymore, but it's, it's there, so.
Hey, I, I got a question on the micro distillery.
Yeah.
Where, where does the not more than fifty thousand gallons, where does that fifty thousand?
That's from the state.
Is that the?
So the state sets that level. So these, the definitions of micro distiller are taken from the state so that we're in compliance and just kind of doing the same thing that the state, uh, alcoholic beverage control director requires, so.
Okay. Since there really isn't an applicant, we'll move on. Um, any public comment? All right, um, any questions? Then I'll close the public hearing. Close the public hearing and any deliberation?
I just think that changes he added are fine. That's everything we already talked about, and it's good that they put in non-alcoholic, you know, every, just to make it clear. So I think that's fine. I mean, it's really, it's fine.
We might have a Coca-Cola pop facility command or something.
That's right, or like my client.
There you go.
Haritos.
Any other discussion? Comments? Distresses?
I think it's good.
All right, moving on to, I guess that's a little deliberation, so I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning amendments for micro distillery and screening and fencing as presented by staff. Is there a number on this? No.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the changes. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion carries seven, zero, zero. All right. Let Kat back in. You didn't even have to go to your car this time.
I know. It's a lot quicker.
We, we were quick. All right, next item is discussion concerning the rescheduling of the January second regular meeting.
Yeah, um, I don't know, let's see, so we're coming back from a holiday. The day after is planning commission. Um, I don't know if anybody's interested in moving that date.
I'd prefer to schedule it the following week if possible.
Okay.
Does it fall on city council meeting then?
It would be that week. Um, we could do a different day. Any day that week.
It's the challenge.
Besides Thursday.
Um, the only other question I would have would be, um, as far as the continuing work sessions for the comprehensive plan.
I have not discussed that with Pat, so I don't know what his thoughts are. Um, we can definitely discuss that when he's back and figure some time out.
Is he gonna be on vacation?
Probably.
We may, we may have to meet without him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But do we want to try to move it to, does anybody else have a conflict with the first Thursday of the month on the second?
I don't, I don't.
So you say January second?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't, I'm not gonna be here.
Okay, so you have a conflict. I was just asking if you have a conflict. I, I personally don't have a conflict, so I, I'm fine with it just keeping the way it is.
Okay.
We're just gonna kick Steve out for that night.
Okay, that's perfect.
Sorry, Steve.
I'll try to come when I can.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, I guess we'll keep that meeting, unless there's anybody else has objection, we'll keep it on the second. Okay.
Okay. Um, and.
Conflict?
I don't.
Okay, just, well, I, I didn't, I felt like.
I don't think, I don't know. I'll decide on Wednesday.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Just kidding.
Or Thursday.
Um, another discussion item.
Do you want me just to talk or ask?
Okay, so the citizen participation on the agenda, it kind of just popped up there at some point back in two thousand eighteen. Um, I don't know why, um, but. Um, but our thought was is to just remove the citizen participation section completely from the agendas. Um, if anybody needs to speak, they have that opportunity through the public hearings. Thoughts?
I'm trying to remember. I don't remember when we all of a sudden started having public discussions, so do you remember?
I don't.
Yeah, I mean, the general thought process is if someone has a concern about something on planning and zoning, the ultimate decision makers on most of those items, all those items, like the city council, which has a open comment period anyway, so it's probably best directed to go there. They're the policymaking body of, they want to change the zoning code or change the way we do things. You all can agree or disagree all you want, but at the end of the day, you know, you can't actually finalize that change or recommend that change. You're just, it's just a recommendation, so. We kind of want to make sure people are going to the right place to express concerns. And one thing is I don't want a bunch of people coming into you all and saying, we'd love to see this change. And now you have to bring that to city council on someone's behalf, and it kind of puts you in a tricky spot of that's not really your role. Um, and, you know, we'd like people to deliver that message on their own to the city council so they can hear their residents as opposed to hearing you all or Amy or I saying, hey, you know what came up at the last planning commission meeting, and they have to go back and watch it, so. Kind of want everyone to understand the best places to go for everything.
I think that makes sense to me since they still can come here, public hearings.
Right, yeah.
From what we've been through over the past ten years, I think that kind of does.
We can see both sides of the coin, and I said we have not had some of the conversations that we've been privileged to at the top of my fun to do list. But at the same token, there have been issues that have been brought back to us that have not been public, uh, part of a public hearing that I would have never known had they not been here and shared that with us. You're absolutely correct. They're not anything that we can do anything about. But it certainly may shed light or give foresight into another plan that may come up. Does that make sense?
I think as long as they still are being heard, if they, you know, if they have a concern with project or something, then they're still able to speak, then. They agree with Spence. I mean, a lot of the stuff that is brought to us is not even relevant at that certain time. Because, you know, like if we're doing zoning, then they want to talk about sidewalks. It's not what we're talking about.
Well.
So I mean.
Control of purse.
I do agree, Cindy, like what you're saying, though, if something gets sent back to us again, um, if there's not the system participation, because it wouldn't, the public hearing would be closed at that point, so there would be no opportunity for them to shed their perspective. Is that pretty much along the lines of what you're saying?
Yes, but what if it's not a public hearing item? And they are here to say just in general public comments, we're having a parking issue. And and it's a true parking issue, and we didn't think about the way something was laid out, or there's a site triangle issue, and we didn't, we didn't catch it on a plan. I don't know. I'm just trying to pull things out of my hat.
The.
No, I I'm just saying.
You're right.
There's, I'm just saying there's a two, two sides to that coin. Absolutely, there's, there's things that we have no control over, but sometimes there is something that is brought to, brought before us that does need oh, that's a consideration, and then the next time that there is a plan, we can go, oh, I remember something about that being said, maybe we need to take a closer look at that. I'm not saying it happens three times a year. I'm just saying that there's always two sides to the coin.
What, and to Cindy's point too, I think that a lot of, uh, public feels a lot more comfortable coming in front of our board than the city council and mayor to to to, you know, voice their opinion. We've always been in support of public opinion, so I don't, I also don't mind keeping it on there, giving them their five minutes.
Yeah, but then.
But go ahead, but we we don't have, but we don't have the control, but.
We don't have.
But they still will come and bring it to us to to discuss.
If they're not comfortable with our staff, then I think that's the issue, then.
It's not staff, or I'm sorry.
City council. Uh, governing.
Governing body. I think, I think that's an issue.
Well, but it it is kind of intimidating. I mean, I've spoke at those before, and it's pretty.
It it's intimidating, but for those of you that go to the governing body meetings, they never respond to people.
That's right.
That.
They only listen.
They only listen. They never respond. There's never a
That's right.
potential solution. There's never an
Right.
alternative.
Right, that's why it's intimidating. There's no response back.
That's what I'm saying. Maybe that needs to be changed. If you have a question.
And just for you all, you shouldn't be responding either when people come up for, it's not a call and response for either body.
A lot of times we deliberate after we hear what the system participation is, a lot of times we do deliberate based off of what their comments are amongst each other, you know, I mean. I I'm under, I guess my thoughts are I'd like to hear more from the community because that's, we're representing all our communities, so I think it'd be kind of silly to take it out personally.
Well, I don't think it takes that much time out of our meetings normally. I mean.
I agree.
And if it if it's starting to, I can cut it, I can make it shorter, or whoever's the chairperson can make it shorter to two minutes or one minute or whatever.
And I just also want to say, sorry, that citizen participation is really meant for items that aren't on the agenda, unless it's a public hearing, at which time they need to speak during the public hearing. So just to put that.
So you're saying that I need to tighten up my rules.
No.
I do, I do understand what you're saying, though, the for, keep their, keep their comments for the public hearing part during the public hearing and not during just the citizen participation. So I I do underst- I do understand that. I know that a lot of city council members do watch our meetings, and so it would be an opportunity for them to hear about an issue possibly a week before, so they could maybe do some research if there's something that they were concerned about or interested in. So I I kind of like the idea that it's just another opportunity for the public to come give their opinion. Um, even if it's only a very short and we don't have to respond, and we're not going to respond to it, or we have no control over what they're maybe bringing before us, but I do believe it gives them an opportunity to take, bring something before the city council, before the city council meeting. And so maybe then the city council could address it at that time.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
What a point do, does it get to, or if any, is there ever response to what the community is saying? Just never? Like if they have a question on something.
Well, we used to respond.
Well, so i- if there's a question and staff can answer it, and your staff does do that, and they do it at city council too, they they usually address it either during scout, staff comments. Sometimes staff asks if you guys would like them to address it, you know, quickly after citizen participation. That's up to, you know, if it's a, hey, when is this coming before us or why are we doing this? What we don't want is someone saying, why is it that you guys don't do what I want you to, why, why don't we have more sidewalks? Well, it's kind of a.
Within reason.
Yeah, that's a, that's not a question we can really answer within one meeting. It's one, you all don't have the power of the purse, but.
We haven't been able to answer that in twenty years.
Yeah, so I think it just, it it does take, sometimes questions get answered by staff, but what the point of that isn't, is not is for people to come up and ask you a bunch of questions. You answer in the moment, and they continue asking questions during that five minutes, because that just turns it into a debate.
Yeah.
Um, and we don't want to make it look like anyone's coming in here with agendas, you or the public, and trying to steer something, so. Questions, fine. If you guys want to ask staff, like, hey, do you guys have answers to that? And staff can nod or shake their head. Um, and we can address that after the public comment hearing if you'd like, but staff won't always have answers in the moment. Sometimes it's a, well, we need to look into that.
Yeah, well, you know, because like a lot of them, what I mean is, you know, when there's a crowd here and more than one person has the same question, Pat will go turn around, answer those questions.
Yeah.
Right.
Do they do that at city council? I've never seen them do that. I mean, that's what I mean with the communication. If they're, you know, there's fifty people with the same question.
No, they won't answer it.
They rarely do.
It usually comes at staff reports at the end, end of the meeting. A lot of times it's addressed, and a lot of times those questions, city council needs some more investigation. Everyone, you are welcome to watch. Everyone at these tables during city council meetings is usually taking notes, so when there's a question asked, it's in their department, they're going to start looking into it.
They're taking notes, and it's been.
But they don't answer it.
They're taking notes, but a lot of times, Mary, those people are already gone, so they're not getting, they're not getting the answers unless they're going back and re
That's right.
Listening to the entire thing, or fast forward to the staff, staff reports to get an answer, or watch two weeks later or a month later to see if that question.
That's right. I think here we we usually did it where the staff would respond if they could.
Is that because it's a part of the public hearing usually?
But they can, they can contact city staff
Absolutely.
outside of meeting times and get it, get their answer to their question, if they're really concerned about it, which I find that most people that are really either angry or concerned will do that.
Or have done it before they even come in.
Right, oh, yeah. Sometimes that's the case, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll leave it.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion items?
No.
Okay. Uh, announcements and reports?
Let me do reports. Um, at the November fourteenth, uh, city council meeting, um, they approved the final plot of Hidden Hills Third, and there was no meeting in, uh, the end of November. That's all I have.
Any announcements from planning commissioners? Decide you're not going to be here on the second.
I I just had a question. At one of our work sessions or maybe the last meeting that we had, Pat said something about getting us a drafts.
Yeah, I think he is still working on it.
Okay.
I'll check with him. I'll let him know that you asked about that when he's back next week.
Okay.
I do have a question to you about the next meeting. So it's on the second. When would we get information? Because it's like Christmas and New Year's and, do you know what I mean? Is there a cutoff date for for you guys to have information in order to process?
There is, um.
Like, does it?
Usually it's a pretty light meeting that time because.
Well, it's, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be, you have a lot of stuff for us to that day.
Um, there's at least five right now.
Only five?
Um, I mean, my goal would be to try to get it to the Friday before, like I.
You'll work. Like, I'm off. I know a lot of people.
Well, I'm off that whole week of Christmas, but, um, I'll, I can do it.
So that's the only thing that I'm thinking now is, is anybody gonna, I mean, maybe she's here the second, but she's not here the week before. You shouldn't have to work on your time off.
It's fine.
You just have to set the cutoff date for the applicants to bring it in the week before.
They have a cutoff date.
Yeah.
It's just us getting it put together, all, all the reports.
Well, you can have your replacement do it.
Pat will be back from vacation by then, okay. Oops.
Any other announcements? I'd entertain a meeting, or a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
I thought you were saying something else.
Okay.